This time I'd like to turn the meeting over to our student representatives, Kelsey and Hannah.
Our SGA meeting was on February 13th. The talent show was moved from February 20th to February 28th due to poor weather. It will still be in the LTHS auditorium at 6:00 PM with, for $5 at the door. On February 22nd, there will be a 3D drinking, drugging, and driving field trip from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Also on February 22nd, there will be the winter festival from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. It will be catered by Fuchello's, there will be a DJ, carnival games to play, an escape room, and a scavenger hunt. Sales are February 19th to February 21st, and they are $5 in W-108. On March 1st, Stan Toll Steve is coming back to LTHS to speak to various student leaders. The next SGA meeting is 6:30 to 7:30 PM on Wednesday, March 13th in the lecture hall. March 23rd is the boosters gift auction, and they are looking for volunteers. See Mrs. York in W-108 to sign up to help. April 6th, Mike Smith presentation at Saraville War Memorial High School. See Mrs. York in W-108 to sign up and get the permission slip. On April 13th, the H&amp;M Potter auction is looking for volunteers. See Mrs. York in W-108 for details. May 10th is the junior prom.
At this time, I would like to ask Dylan Danko to join me down at the podium, please. February's Unsung Hero Award is presented to Dylan Danko for his positive attitude and enthusiasm in the school and community. Dylan is involved in many clubs, including SGA, Interact, and Ada. This past year, he also created the Ultimate Frisbee Club with Mr. Sotero. He dedicates much of his time to winter and spring track. He is always willing to volunteer his time to help with events going on around the school. Dylan is a member of the STEM Academy and takes honors and AP classes as well. He is working to become an Eagle Scout during his high school career. Dylan was inducted into National Honor Society this year. Dylan continually pushes himself to excel in his classes and will always challenge himself to do even better. It is for these reasons that Dylan Danko has been selected to receive February's Unsung Hero Award. Congratulations, Dylan.
At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Clark with the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, President Giordano, and congratulations Dylan, and I see Dylan's proud family up there, so why don't you all stand to be recognized? Congratulations, Dylan. All right, welcome to the February Board Meeting. I know there's some weather coming at us, not sure exactly what it's going to be, but let me just start out by saying that as of right now, we have canceled after-school activities for tomorrow. So, we're gonna keep a close eye on the weather. Mr. DeGeorge and I will be working with Mr. MacArthur, who's in charge of Facilities and Grounds, and we will be taking a look and seeing what the weather's gonna bring us. So, please stay tuned to Twitter, our website, we will be sending out an automated call, so pay attention to all those things, and we'll let you know what's going on, based on what's going on out there. Thank you to Hannah and Kelsey for that awesome information. The best thing I heard about that was the word prom, because I think of spring and summer. And so, it is right around the corner. I think we're 36 days away for spring, so I don't know about you, but I'm really excited about that. So, like we always do, I wanted to point out the beautiful artwork. Ariana Link, who's a grade 6 student at Milpon, designed the cover of tonight's board agenda. It's beautiful. And Jeanette Bacon, who's a 5th grade student at Milpon, designed the artwork for the superintendent's report. And again, if you ever get a chance to come over and visit us at the board office, we have all of the student artwork posted on our walls in these beautiful black frames, and it's just starting to look really, really beautiful. So, if you ever get a chance and you want to see all of the artwork, invite you. Next thing I want to do is welcome our new Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Steve Decker. Today was his first day, so congratulations on joining us finally. So, next couple of days, Mr. Decker and I will be touring the six schools, meeting the administrators, meeting the teachers, meeting parents, students, and so we welcome you and glad you're on board. All right, Mr. Brandis, not only has Seniors of the Month to present, but quite a few accomplishments of our high school students. And so, this is my favorite part of the agenda. So, Mr. Brandis, are you ready to get us started?
I am, yes.
All right, let's do it.
Thank you, Dr. Clark, Board of Education, thank you very much. Mr. Decker, welcome. Welcome, parents and everybody, this is one of the best parts of the, our meeting. I first want to recognize the Students of the Month. The first student of the month, I'd like to call down to join me and celebrate is Margaret Patterson. Please come on down, Margaret. Congratulations. To celebrate your accomplishments, we're going to watch a short video.
Good afternoon, I'm Greg Brandis, Principal Lacey Township High School, and we're here to celebrate the Seniors of the Month for February. Congratulations to Margaret Patterson. And here to celebrate her accomplishments is Jessica Chalganoff.
I'm here with February Senior of the Month Maggie Patterson. Congrats, Maggie.
Thank you, Jess.
So, how does it feel to be Senior of the Month?
I'm very honored to have gotten this.
So, what clubs and activities were you involved in?
Throughout high school, I've been involved in SGA, Interact, I've been involved in the STEM Academy and NHS.
What teachers have helped you during your time here at LTHS?
Mr. Kuzon and Mr. Sotero have had the largest impact on me, mostly because I'm in the STEM Academy with them.
Congratulations, Maggie, on winning Senior of the Month. You've come a long way from winning that STEM award you've already had this year, and what you've already accomplished. Congratulations once again, and I cannot wait to see what you come up with in the future.
So, Maggie, what qualities do you think help you succeed here?
Probably my enthusiasm and my positive attitude, because it helps me to keep working hard.
So, what are you gonna miss most about LTHS?
Probably my friends and the fact that my sister's at this school, so I'm really gonna miss seeing her through the school day.
So, what do you want to major in after, after school here?
Probably engineering.
Well, thank you, Maggie, congratulations.
Thanks.
Congratulations also to Maggie and her family as well, congratulations. Next, I want to celebrate also our February Senior of the Month, Ryan Thompson, please join me. Congratulations to Ryan and his family as well, to mark all accomplishments. We're also gonna watch a short video on Ryan as well.
Hello, we're back here celebrating the Seniors of the Month. Congratulations to Ryan Thompson. Congratulations, and here to celebrate his accomplishments is John Cron.
I'm here with Ryan Thompson, February Senior of the Month, congratulations, Ryan.
Thank you very much, thank you.
So, Ryan, how does it feel to win Senior of the Month?
It's an extreme honor, and I'm very thankful for the opportunity.
What have you been involved in throughout high school?
Throughout high school, I've been involved in the Lacey Township Ice Hockey Team, the Tennis Team. I've been involved in Ada, so it's been a nice, nice time here.
It's a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
And what teachers have had the greatest impact on your high school's success?
I would have to say Mr. Rameo. I had OCC history, and he pushed me to be the best that I could be, and that was really influential for me.
Hey, Ryan, congratulations on winning a Senior of the Month, and thank you for the honor of asking me to say a few words about you. You are without a doubt the most annoying Eagles fan ever, but with that, you are also one of my favorite students of all time. You've always worked so hard, everything you've put your mind to, and I was literally just gloating to the Ocean County College class about how well your paper on Reaganomics went last year in US history too. So, congratulations, you've earned it, you deserve it, and I am so proud of you.
And what qualities helped you get through high school?
I would definitely have to say being hardworking and humble, and always staying true to myself.
That's pretty nice.
Yeah, for sure.
And what do, what did you think that you're gonna miss most here about LTHS?
Definitely gonna miss spending time with everybody and my teachers, and you know, just the time I had here.
And what are your plans going ahead in the future?
Ahead in the future, I would like to go to Rutgers and go for Business Administration.
All right, thank you, Ryan, February Senior of the Month.
Thank you.
Last, we have our Vocational Student of the Month, Alexandra Toth, please join me. Congratulations to parent or family as well, congratulations. We're gonna watch a short video on Alex as well.
Hello, we're back here with February's Vocational Senior of the Month, Ali Toth, congratulations. Here to celebrate her accomplishments is Jacob Serrano.
Congratulations on winning Senior of the Month. How's it feel to be Senior of the Month?
I'm very honored to receive this award.
What activities were you involved with throughout high school?
I was on the basketball and soccer team, and I go to the vocational school for dental assisting.
What teacher would you say had the biggest impact on your high school's success?
I'd say Coach Larice, he's always pushed me to do better on and off the court.
Hey, Ali Toth, congratulations on being voted Vocational Senior of the Month. It's a great honor. I've known you all four years of high school as a geometry student, and a basketball player on the varsity for all four years, and I've really been proud of you for all the hard work you've put in, and I know you're gonna be a success at whatever you choose to do in the future. So, once again, congratulations about being voted Vocational Student of the Month.
What qualities would you say helped you succeed throughout high school?
I think just my drive for success.
What are you gonna miss the most when you graduate?
I think playing sports with all my friends and just seeing them every day.
What are your plans after high school?
I want to go to hygiene school to become a dental hygienist.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, that concludes our Senior, yes. That does conclude our Seniors of the Month. We have some individual recognition and group recognition beyond our Seniors of the Month. First, I would like to ask Mackenzie Cooper to come and join me up at the podium.
I'm going to read her recognition, so congratulations to Mackenzie Cooper on her award-winning invitation to the Summer 2019 National Youth Leadership Forum on Medicine. Mackenzie is a member of the founding Co-Order Leadership Academy here at Lacey High School, and quietly becoming one of its most successful members. Mackenzie has presented a major research project on the effectiveness of leadership of the EPA under Scott Pruitt, and is currently working on a major research presentation on nonprofit organizations that focus on women's health, both for her Leadership in Humanities III course. This summer, Mackenzie was awarded the opportunity to attend the National Youth Leadership Forum on Medicine. This forum is an invite-only forum, which is in recognition of her hard work and attention to detail in her academics. Mackenzie will be at the conference from July 7th through the 15th, where she will be put through emergency scenarios using a medical toolkit she has already received through the mail. Mackenzie has a strong sense of service and passion for medicine that will hopefully lead her to a career choice of plastic surgery. Mackenzie, you're a remarkable young woman, and we are proud of your achievements and success. Congratulations.
At this time, I'd like to also have Jenna Strifler come down and join us, please.
Jenna just recently participated in the Asbury Park Press Monthly Essay Contest for high school students. Essays are judged on a number of factors, including creativity, strong opening and closing paragraphs, compelling narratives, and good grammar and spelling. Jenna won first place prize in December for her essay answering the question, "What is the best holiday gift you have ever given or received?" She wrote about her brother who was in the military and returned from advanced training to spend the holidays with her family. In June, Jenna will participate in the annual Student Voices Awards reception, and will compete for the top prize among all the monthly essay winners. Congratulations, Jenna. At this time, I'd like to welcome down Coach Geiger to introduce our next award recipient.
Good evening, I'm Coach Geiger, head track and field coach for the girls' teams for the winter and spring. I'd like to thank you for giving me this opportunity here to recognize one of our athletes from the winter season, sophomore Camille Tomko. It's kind of hard to believe that Camille is only a sophomore, as she's already made such a huge impact on our program. Remember her coming in as a freshman, now a very, very raw athlete, but we learned pretty quickly that one of Camille's best attributes is this unbelievable competitive spirit. She just loves beating people, she wants to break records, she wants to be great and do great things for Lacey Township. As a freshman, she was part of a relay, triple jump relay, that did break the school record along with Abby Elias and Haley Corwin. But, we're really here to talk about what she did this past winter season. She was able to break two school records as an individual, as well as end up number two all-time in another event. So, it all started off, you know, we'll talk about the 400s where she ended up number two, running 62.50 seconds. But, she was able to break one of our records twice, so that started off in a 300 meters when she won the Egg Invitational, running 45.15 seconds. We then had the opportunity to go to Staten Island and compete in a world-class facility against some of the best teams, athletes on the East Coast. This is where Camille broke our long jump record, jumping 15 feet 5 inches, and then broke once again the 300 record, running 44.57 seconds. That 300 record had been on our books for 12 years. So, great job, Camille, really proud of what you do, look forward to next year.
Keep running and jumping. Congratulations. Last, certainly not least, I'm going to ask members of our robotics teams from Team Carol and Team Little Peanut to come and join me up at the podium. Come on, everybody, come on down, please.
I'm extremely proud of all of our STEM 2 teams that competed in this year's OCC Robotics Competition. Lacey has been involved in the OCC Tech Prep Program for several years. Our students continue to perform at their best throughout these competitions. This year's competition was made up of three parts, remote sumo, presentation, and line sumo. Mr. Sotero focused the students to task to create a robot using one Lego robotic kit that was able to successfully navigate a black line on the floor, all the while sensing another robot coming from the opposite direction. All five of our entered teams competed at their best, but two teams really excelled in the presentation portion of the competition. Team Carol, with team members Brody Morris, Caitlin Savitt, Nina Fiaco, and Kaylee Beal, placed first out of 14 high schools in this category. Since they placed first, they each were awarded a $500 OCC Scholarship that they can use toward their Jump Start Program or OCC classes. Another one of our teams, Little Peanut, with the team members Amber Mason, Emily Phillips, Kenne Boyle, and Kimberly Martinez Alvarez, placed second in this category as well. Congratulations to both these teams for their hard work during this project. We could not be more proud, congratulations, ladies. I want to take this time, as we're giving out the certificates, to congratulate all the family members who are here tonight of the award recipients. Their accolades don't go without, also your hard work and dedication to support them. So, congratulations to the families as well. Please also, like our SGA representatives also said, ground support all the many things that are going on, great at the high school. We have our Science Fair going on this Thursday. Also, we're recognizing former administrator Karen Hughes at a ceremony during the boys' basketball game at halftime. We have the talent show February 28th, along with a lot of activities. Please check our school website and see all the remarkable things that our students are doing. So, thank you again for allowing me to present tonight.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brandis. Thank you, I appreciate that, and congratulations to all of our students. It's amazing, the work that they do, and I wish we had more time, and when we start showing our good news or our minute in Lacey videos, we'll start including some of their projects, because it really is amazing what our students create and what they accomplish every single day. So, once again, congratulations to our Seniors of the Month, Ryan, Margaret, and Alexandra, and congratulations again, Dylan, for being named Unsung Hero for the month of February. And, one more reminder, just keep your eye out on the weather and our announcements, because we don't know what tomorrow is going to bring, but we will try to make that announcement as early as possible for planning purposes. And that concludes my comments for tonight. President Giordano, thank you for the opportunity to present.
Excellent, at this time, I'd like to open the floor to public comment. Going once? Am I setting a new record here with the second month in a row with no public comment?
That's because I'm here.
Seeing none, I will close the floor to public comment and start with board member comment. Sure, yes, before we get into the important part of the meeting, we'll give everybody the opportunity to get home safely and do your homework. Our student representatives, they're already gone.
They're already gone.
Hey, congrats, congrats.
Good night, thank you for coming.
I used to do the long jump.
Congratulations.
Oh, yeah. She's gonna be something else.
Never seen so much fun. Feel lonely now.
It's Regina, it's her.
I can't believe no public comments. Well, that's because we got one, two, three.
You gotta work on Derek.
That was incredible.
Thanks for coming. Congratulations, congrats. I knew it, I knew it.
All right, so this time, I'll start with board comments, and I'll start with board member Riggs, who is also the policy chair.
So, we had a, we had a busy, a busy month in policy this month. We went over 11 new policies, I'm sorry, we revised 10 out of 11. One of them is new. Put one on the table, and then we also did some regulations too. We did four, four more regulations. It looks like this month is gonna be a little lighter as far as policy goes, but yeah, you could see them all, I won't go through each one of them, but you could see them all if you scanned down the agenda. And then, as far as comment goes, just a welcome to our new Assistant Soup Decker.
Nice to meet you.
Hope you enjoy it up here. Our Unsung Hero, Seniors of the Month Vocational Talent, congratulations, everybody. Mackenzie for your National Youth Leadership Forum, Jenna with your essay, and Camille, congratulations for blowing that record out of the water, that 12-year-old 300-meter record and the 15 and a half foot long jump. See how long that one stands for, so. Well, she might, yeah, she might blow it out of the water by the time she's out of here, so. And then, Carol and Little Peanut, again, really cool. So, that was pretty much it for this month, guys, thanks a lot.
Okay, at this time, Ms. Downing for Curriculum.
Yep. Curriculum met on February 7th, in attendance was Mr. Giordano, Mrs. DeSantis, and myself, Dr. Clark. We participated in a conference call with Mr. Nafala, I think that's how you say it, Director of the SMG Franklin. That's an agency that's going to assist the district in placing exchange students under the Student and Exchange Visitor Information System. We are hoping to get a foreign exchange program going in Lacey. As some of you may know, Mondon has one, Central has one, and we're hoping to bring one into Lacey. We're going through all the paperwork and ready to get it started. Dr. Clark shared a copy of the New Jersey Health Survey developed by the Department of Education. All high school students will be participating in the survey with parental permission in the next few months, and the high school will receive $500 for completing that survey. We also reviewed four new high school courses for next year, Education Internship III, Humanities and Leadership IV, Medical Terminology, and AP US Government. We talked about the district's Annual Professional Development Day, which was last Friday, which I understand was a huge success. She also, Dr. Clark also shared with us about a district-wide Good Choices Day that's tentatively scheduled for April 17th. The guest speaker will be Reggie Dobbs from the Youth Alliance. And good news, our first LTHS OCC College Academy graduation is scheduled for May 23rd at the Ocean County College, so that's good news. And we went over seven different job descriptions, updating them, and they're on, I believe they're on the agenda as well. I believe so. And my board comments, I want to congratulate Ryan and Margaret for being Students of the Month. Ryan is a good Eagles fan, so am I, so you have a connection there. Margaret with that positive attitude, I'm sure she's gonna go for our vocational student Alexandra.
You could hear me, right, I hope, okay. Alexandra, for dental hygienist, a vocational student, congratulations. I'm always petrified of going to the dentist, so I hope she is kind and gentle. Unsung Hero, which as many of you have heard me say before, is my favorite award that we give out every month, because these are the students that do so much for the school, and they don't want the accolades, they just want to do what they want to do to help the school. So, congratulations to Dylan. Also, to Jenna, Mackenzie, Camille, we have so many awards tonight, and the robotics team. And I want to welcome finally, Mr. Decker on board, our Assistant Superintendent, looking forward to working with you, especially as curriculum chairperson. And that is it, thank you, Mr. Giordano.
Thank you, Mrs. Downing, Mr. Horvath.
So, first of all, I would like to also welcome our new Assistant Superintendent, welcome aboard. Congratulate our Unsung Hero, our Students of the Month. And again, all the students who received accolades, I think it's amazing how many students have great achievements on a monthly basis here in our district. As Mr. Riggs mentioned, we had a very aggressive policy meeting this month. As a new board member, I was amazed at how much of our policy comes down from the state of New Jersey and is dictated to us by the state and the governor and the legislature. So, I'd encourage everybody to pay attention to that as it comes down to your children, our students, and community members, because a lot of what goes on that you'd think is dictated here in our district is not. So, the congressman has promised to visit, and he has already asked his district director to arrange a meeting, and I spoke with him again this past Saturday at his town hall meeting in Berkeley. A wide variety of topics were discussed during the NSBA Conference sessions in Washington. Some of the guest speakers included Donna Shalala, Betsy DeVos, Lamar Alexander, Pat Roberts, Steve Womack, Norm Ornstein of the AEI, author John Meacham, and Christopher Graves. It was an enlightening and unique experience. Congratulations to our Lacey Seniors of the Month, Margaret Patterson, Ryan Thompson, and our Vocational Senior of the Month, Alexandra Toth, and Unsung Hero, Dylan Danko. Keep up the good work. Congratulations to our STEM department teachers for securing a $12,000 Navia grant from the program at Lakehurst. Hopefully, our Sea Perch team will win the state competition again and bring home more trophies from the Nationals this year. I'm very sorry I missed the OCC College Academy presentation while I was in Washington. I understand it was well-attended, and now we're looking forward to our first graduating cohort in May, as Mrs. Downing mentioned. In just three months, they will be done, sixty-four credits and their associate's degrees. On Wednesday night, January thirtieth, there was a band concert I attended at Lenoka Harbor School. On Thursday night, January thirty-first, I went to Family Night at the Mill Pond Book Fair. Then at 6:00 PM, I went over to the high school for the Winter Fest, and that was a very nice dinner event. Then I went back to Mill Pond for the Lacey Education Foundation's very first volunteer meeting, and I sincerely thank the founding trustees for helping to make this 501(c)(3) organization a reality. On February second, I volunteered at Mill Pond School for World Read Aloud Day. The two classes chose excellent books, and we had great discussions about events of World War II. My thanks to Principal Nemec. Tuesday, February fifth, I attended Governance For Training: Legal Updates at the County Meeting at Jackson Liberty High School. On Thursday, February seventh, we had our Finance and Curriculum Committee meetings back-to-back, and that was a long night. I'm very sorry I missed the Cedar Creek PTA Bingo on Saturday night, February ninth. The weekend got busy, and I wanted to stop by, but I thank everyone that put that event together, and your efforts are greatly appreciated to help the Cedar Creek PTA. Monday night, February eleventh, was the Planning Board meeting. The football field light project was explained in detail by a lighting expert. I am looking forward to seeing this very new LED technology on our field. Tuesday, February twelfth, I attended the PTSA meeting at the high school. Plans for the Daddy Daughter Dance were discussed, and that special event takes place this coming Saturday, February twenty-third. Project graduation was also discussed. If anyone wants to help the PTSA with gift cards or items for the student raffles during project graduation, please drop off any donations for the prizes at the high school. Wednesday, February thirteenth, I went to the Parent Advisory Committee meeting, called the PAC meeting, at 6:00 PM at the high school. A program about behavior as communication was presented. Then at 7:00 PM, I went to the Forkett River School for their PTA meeting. Family Literacy Night at Forkett River School will be held on Thursday, February twenty-first, starting at 4:00 PM, and this is one of my favorite events. The students are filled with pride and enthusiasm as they show their literacy projects to moms and dads, grandparents, aunts and uncles. This Thursday night, February twenty-first, doors open at 6:30 PM for Lacey's thirty-sixth Annual Science Fair at the high school. The awards program starts at seven. Good luck to all the participants. Friday morning, February fifteenth, at 7:30 AM, I attended the kickoff event for the Professional Development Day held at Lacey High School. I heard it was a great success, and everyone learned a lot. Coming up in March, there will be class celebrations for Dr. Seuss's birthday. Find your favorite Dr. Seuss book and have a family reading night. Green Eggs and Ham, Horton Hears a Who, One Fish, Two Fish, Fox and Sox, there's so many to choose from. Everyone should make some time to read. March first and second, there will be evening performances of the middle-school play Peter Pan at 6:00 PM, and I'm looking forward to attending this event as well. And our next board meeting will be on a Monday, March eighteenth, at 7:00 PM. Please join us, and thank you to all in attendance here tonight. I encourage the public to attend our meetings and strongly consider becoming a board candidate. This is a very unique and special elected position. The candidate petitions will soon be available at the County Clerk's Office in Toms River. The deadline to apply is in July. Please think about it. It only requires ten signatures of registered voters and a notary. Thank you, Mr. Giordano.
Thank you, Ms. DeSenza. Mr. deBlass.
I don't know why you would ever have me talk after her. You must hate me or love me, I don't know which one. I don't really have much to say. Congratulations to the Students of the Month, and you know, I'm busting her chops, it's great to have someone so knowledgeable here, to be honest. Congratulations and welcome, Mr. Decker. You have a great mentor in Dr. Clark, the best, so I wish you a wonderful time here. Daddy and Daughter Dance is Saturday, super pumped about that. If anybody in here is going and you want to have a dance-off with me and my daughter, feel free to challenge me at any time. Other than that, I hope everyone has a wonderful week. I hope we don't get too much snow, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. deBlass. We'll eventually get these microphones right. The Finance Committee met on Thursday, February seventh. Myself, Ms. DeSenza, and Ms. Downing were in attendance. During the meeting, Mr. deGeorge updated us regarding the project to create the security vestibules at our schools. We also discussed the project to replace the gymnasium floor at Mill Pond. We also discussed the extension of three-phase electrical service to the high school, which will allow us to install the lights, which we're all excited about. We also discussed the necessary proposed, or the proposed necessary privatization of our student childcare services. We also had a long discussion about the 2019-2020 budget with a bunch of topics that included the impact on the property tax levy, our proposed capital projects, as well as our proposed lease purchases. From my perspective, my comments, congratulations to all the students that were recognized tonight: Dylan, Ryan, Margaret, Alexandra, Alexandra. I just think, seeing your accomplishments and seeing like everything that you guys do in the classroom, on sports fields, volunteering, being part of the community, it's just great. And it is the best part of this meeting every month, is getting to recognize you guys. Camille, track and field, we have a track and field star at Lacey, I think that's fantastic. The robotics team is part of the STEM program, that's a fantastic accomplishment. Our wrestling team, I don't know if you had the chance to come out and watch our wrestling team underneath the new light, but the wrestling team accomplished so much this season, created a lot of excitement for the town, for the school, and I believe we have several wrestlers that are progressing through to states, so we wish them luck, and we're really excited about that. Finally, Mr. Decker, welcome. Look forward to working with you. Wish you a lot of luck and success in your role, and with that, I will end my comments, and we can go on to new business, I think. All right. Okay, items, item A, new business, one through fifteen.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Ms. DeSenza.
Yes, with a few exceptions. Abstain not for conflict on 951, 543 on item two list of bills, and no on 951706, 953808, and 953579.
You will please provide me with the list as usual?
Sure.
Thank you so much. Mr. Riggs. Yes, I'm going to abstain on A2, number 206100. Thank you. Ms. deBlass.
Yes.
Ms. Downing.
Yes.
Ms. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Downing.
Yes.
Ms. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Ms. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Ms. deBlass.
Yes.
Ms. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Downing.
Yes.
Ms. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Ms. deBlass.
Yes.
Ms. Downing.
Yes, and congratulations to Sharon Baloo on her retirement.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
And Mr. deGeorge, before we go on, I did want to acknowledge our new Transportation Coordinator, Mr. Thomas Sotera. Congratulations, sir. Very happy to have you onboard, though I will tell you, you are filling some very big shoes, but I know Mr. Hannan, who's been with us for a very long time, will be here to transition you into the role, but we welcome you for probably what I say one of the most important jobs in this district, and that is the transportation of our students. So, congratulations to you, I'm assuming this is your family? So, congratulations, thank you for joining us tonight.
We hope you have a big jar of Excedrin.
Yeah, yes, yes, yes. So, if you don't, if I can just add one comment, so, welcome, Mr. Sotera. His wife and family is here tonight, so welcome them as part of our Lacey family. I will echo what Dr. Clark said. Welcome, you have some big shoes to fill, but I wanted to say something for the record about Mr. Hannan. So, if you looked inside Mr. Hannan, and I'm not suggesting that you do by any means, in addition to finding an abundance of candy and soda, you're gonna find the heart of, I would say, in my career, the kindest, most compassionate person I've ever worked with. He cares more deeply about the staff and the students of this district than anyone I know. So, in addition to your technical skills, that is the skill that we're looking forward to you bringing, that you will grow to love this place and its people as he did and as I do. So, welcome aboard, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, look forward to working with everybody.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Congrats, ma'am. At this time, do we have any walk-on motions?
As a matter of fact, we do. It is entitled Extension of Long-Term Suspension of Student. It reads as follows: Move that the board approve the extension of the suspension of student with ID number 904202 until the next regular meeting of the Board of Education to be held on Monday, March eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Horvath.
Yes.
Ms. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mr. Riggs.
Yes.
Ms. deBlass.
Yes.
Ms. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Motions carry. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll get it right eventually.
Right, how do we shut this down?
Shut it off.
How do you lock? What button? Oh, that's what you're doing?
Hold it all the way down. Keep... Hold it all the way down. Keep...